Okay, get started. Please stand. We'll have Pastor Steve do prayer. And I'll just pledge allegiance. Thank you.
Lord, I thank you today. I thank you for your love and your grace and Lord, continue to open up our hearts and our minds to understand you better. Let us see your truth each and every day. And Lord, I pray for protection for our village and everybody that serves here. Lord, continue to shine your light into our lives each and every day. In Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, other not, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for everyone being here tonight. We will start off with the roll call. Cheryl?
Bailey?
Here.
Eggway?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
And everyone else out there.
Next on the agenda, we have the representative from the Hicksville Baseball Association. Several of you here tonight, thank you for coming. Anybody want to present your proposal or not?
Yeah, I would. Yeah, thanks for having us tonight. So I think we sent it out to you guys about a month ago, so I think everyone's had a chance to take a look at it. So what we went through, just some of the improvements that have been taking place over the last five years from the when they kick off with the new dugouts on each of the fields and then the concrete for fields five and seven there when you walk up. So that was completed in the first phase. And then the second phase, we went through and added the concrete on back field six to complete that portion as well and included stadium seating and the coverings above all the seats. So that was really the first and second stage through 2002. And then in 2023, went through and updated the bases and home plate and installed those on all the fields there. And through last year, at the end of last year, we resurfaced each of the fields, just had them re-crowned and leveled out so that they would drain better and just make it a little bit more accessible on wet days. So then, I guess from there, what we're proposing is a long-term lease agreement so that we don't have to go through that every year. And then it'll also allow us to continue to raise funds and volunteer help with what we'd like to do moving forward. Which on the back page here, you can see your second page. The batting cages and the equipment storage room that we'd like to build back there. Scoreboards and really the the fourth field is what we see as a much-needed addition there with the, for the junior high. Over the last several years, as we've taken that on, we've noticed that there's a pretty big drop-off from once you get done with Little League and Pee-wee, then kind of out in space to Little League or Junior High, depending on who's running it, where it's at. And then you get to high school. So we really wanted to bridge that gap in between Little League and high school baseball and really create that that program all the way through so that we're improving there along the way. So that's, that's one of the bigger projects there. And just, these are all estimates based off of what we've seen. Just doing some research along with a lot of volunteer hours. This is not, I mean, if we go out and have to contract places, it's going to be much more than this. But this is a lot of volunteer hours and people donating their time to get this done. And then rounding it off at the end, we'd like to get the lights on field six and then the new field to the, all four fields up there are lit for play. So any questions with that?
So this is what you're proposing? I mean, so you don't have to pay the, like, your $700 contract yet this year?
I mean, that would be part of it. As part of the contract, yes. I mean, some of the, all the costs that we've incurred over the last five years with what also we're looking at in the next, let's say, five to 10 years. I think that's a pretty substantial investment that kind of warrants the the cost that it would be in the lease that's there today.
We're not making, I guess, the goal with this is not to, we're not saying we're going to do this. We're not going to, because we dislike the $700, we're going to invest half a million, like, a quarter million dollars. These are the improvements that we want to see, like, that we want to make down there.
I understand. And they're all great. I mean, they're all, that benefit the HBA. I mean, it's
And the community as a whole. But when we were here, basically the goal is to not have to rehash it every year. So the goal would be to allow, and you guys asked for plans, basically, at the, at the beginning of the year when we were talking about lease negotiations. So that's what this is. It's kind of our, our goal of kind of what we would like to see, what that area transformed into.
I was, I mean, remember when we talked about this, my, my biggest concern, well, actually, I thought the $700 that Cory and Cheryl agreed to, I didn't see it until, you know, right before the meeting. I actually thought that was way too low when I seen what the electric bill for the concessions that, you know, you guys used, that was $900 or some dollars extra. And then the skid of quick drive was $700 or $800 for that. And then, you know, the time that takes our park director to line the field, drag the field, buy the chalk and all that kind of stuff. I know we have a couple, $2,000, $3,000. Not including labor, I guess, for just materials. And, you know, toilet paper, paper towels, all that kind of stuff. So I was, I thought the $700 was really more than fair, I thought. I know, I know the school pays for it when it comes to, like, the baseball and softball diamonds. We don't own those, the school doesn't. And we pay, we pay the village a lease for us to use the baseball and softball fields. They take out the trash after events, they drag the field, they line the field. They got to mow the grass no matter what. It doesn't matter if we're there or not, you know, there'd be a violation of an ordinance if they didn't mow the grass, but all the games that are JV and varsity have on our fields, that takes the park director time, so the school pays, pays for that. And I know the softball association is the same way. They pay a lease agreement with the village student for the other fields that they use. So I'm just kind of curious.
But I guess on top of that, was the school and those, are they making these types of investments in those areas?
We put all new concrete underneath the boys' baseball, all new fence around there. Just put a brand-new scoreboard on the girls' softball diamond, re-crowned the softball field. Yeah, they, the baseball diamond alone, hundreds some thousand dollars in the last few years. All new bleachers.
Okay.
Yeah, they've, they've done tons and tons of money.
And it's out there.
Yeah.
I think another perspective with that is
And they pay a lot more than $700 a year to, for the baseball softball.
Another perspective on that is, we're all volunteers. You know, any, any of our funds that we use is, you know, we're not reliant on, we don't have annual budgets like the school does. We don't have the the outlay. So it's just a bunch of dads that are up there trying to make it happen because we want a solid baseball program for our kids and for the community. So it's just a different perspective. But obviously, we're not here to squabble over the $700. We're here to lay this out. And basically, try and come to terms on something.
You're going to say what you've done in the past or what other dads and part of your group has done in the past is tremendous. And what you're doing in the future is also very nice for the facilities. My question was, 10 years is a long time. I know when I was in the program with my, you know, kids and everything. Are you going to have kids, you know, usually it's the dads that have the kids in the program that really spearhead, and you guys have done that. Are you going to go out 10 years? Are you going to still have kids in the program 10 years, you know, eight, nine, 10 years?
Absolutely will.
Kids will keep coming. I thought, that's great.
How many of you guys will still be there in 10 years?
Well, that was going to be my question, is the continuity. I mean, I like what we see here. Obviously, you guys have Well, it's part of, part of the agreement would be that regardless of who changes in and out, these, these commitments are still there, right? So it would be part of, as you're brought onto the board, you would be made aware of what the commitment's been. And we'd have periodic check-ins, maybe it's every two, three years, to ensure that we're doing what we said we do. And then if, if we say we go five years and haven't made any investments, and it goes back to a, whatever the agreed-upon lease would have been at the time, you would put it in that, in place at that time, right? So you'd have check-ins to ensure that we're holding up to our end of the bargain as well. So depending, it shouldn't matter who's there, it's still the organization and there's been commitments and there'll be the lease and that'll be passed on regardless of who's there. I mean, personally, I'm going to be there at least another four, five years. I know Taylor's going to be longer than that.
I'll be there.
I'll be there a while.
10 years at least.
And then our kids coming out every couple of years.
Part of that is also, you know, we're taking on junior high. So HBA now manages junior high ball. So every one of us is going to be there. And the other big thing with this is the HBA was never formalized prior to last year. It was an entity that everybody kind of just assumed existed, and it wasn't. So now, we are, we are incorporated. We are a designated 501(c)(3). Everything's official. So it's not like that can just fade into nowhere and you have irresponsible practices necessarily. Like, it's just, we're the sort of the founding members of the official HBA, I guess. We're not going anywhere. I mean, obviously, unless you guys don't agree to it. And then we'll have to go somewhere. That's basically what it comes down to.
I guess the point to remember is there's literally, each of those kids are spending tens of hours down at the park. And I don't want to bring up the P word, but we took the pool away and it's not probably going to go in. And this is something that they can all enjoy. And boys and girls alike, right? You guys allow girls to play on the field. So there's, how many kids do you have? Hundreds, right?
Through, through junior high, last year there was about 215.
And you're, $700 a year for 10 years is $7,000. And they're going to put in, look at the numbers. I just think that it's a no-brainer.
Well, even if, even if the number is, throw it out there, it raises to $2,000. We just want to know what that is going to be going forward. We don't want it to be $750 this year, $4,000 next year, $8,000 the year afterward. We're just asking to see where are you guys going with it? That's, that's what we're looking for, is to under, both sides to understand where this is going in the future.
I really appreciate this. What, the amount of work that you guys put in to coming here tonight, I really appreciate seeing these numbers. You know, we're used to seeing stuff like this. So you guys come and prepare. I appreciate that. And I would love, and I even said this at the last meeting, I would love to see more of a partnership between the village and the HBA. I know you guys want to take some ownership over the care of the fields. And I would like to see how we can make that happen as well. That if, if you guys want to work with, somehow we can figure that out. And that would take a burden off of our park director as well. I know there was times this past season that the fields couldn't get done because there just simply wasn't enough man-hours. And that would take some of that burden off of us as a village as well. So it is more than just this, right? I mean, those are some, some big projects, but also now that we know what those projects are, you know, we put in, in the last two years, we put in over $83,000 between lights and fencing. I would have loved to have not necessarily put in fencing that was cosmetic and instead invested in something like this. Now we have these numbers and we have these projects and we can say, whoa, wait, before we do that, let's go and see what the HBA has in mind. So that when it comes time for our budgeting, that we have an idea what that looks like.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think as far as field preparation, we wouldn't want to take that fully over just because we don't have
Oh, no, 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 no.
But we, we do want to have that partnership where, I, I, you get it. If it's 2:00 on a Thursday and it's raining, or it rained, you can't get a field ready in 10 minutes by yourself. Like, that's where, just let us know. We have a lot of dads that'll come down and help, like, the coaches. Like, there's plenty of people that are willing to jump on and help and break or whatever it may be. We need to establish guidelines on how to do it. That's fine. We can all agree to it and then
Yeah, I would love this, like, guidelines and these are, like, an insurance standpoint.
Yeah.
You know, maybe it's just a, a couple of you guys that, you know, hold that ability or whatever that looks like. We hold a clinic that you guys come and you can kind of see what the village expectations are and uphold that. I just think that that could be way better of a partnership than, we're going to be stronger together.
Yeah, absolutely. That's exactly what we want.
I actually think it's a good idea. Probably didn't expect to hear that, but I really, I do. I think it's good. But that was my question, is five years down the road, if nothing's been accomplished, where do we go? Do we, do we have yearly checkpoints with it?
Yeah, I think we need to establish, you know, what that looks like. I don't know that like, what I, what I would say is, what we have outlined in the back are the proposed plans.
Sure.
I would say we have tentative times for each. I would like to have some grace periods on those because you know how it is when budgets and raising money and things like that, it might be off six months, eight months, whatever it is. But like, maybe every two years or whatever, that two to three years, we check in and see that we're on track. Or, and we can show you, this is the schedule, here's where we're laying it out, we're talking to X, Y, and Z, and here's our plan. Like, take these more in depth. Like, this is just the high level. And then obviously, we have got to go into material costs, like, down the, the same. And then who's going to be doing, helping us and things like that in the plan. So we can get more granulated as we go.
Yeah. How much of this stuff falls under prevailing wages?
The goal would be that this is all accomplished via volunteer donations.
Donations.
Yeah.
And that's basically how the cement and the, okay. That was kind of all the formies, right?
Went through the cement and chairs and all that.
I just know that prevailing wages
That's how Froggy Park got built.
Okay. It just can be such a burden to someone who's got an awesome budget lined and then you find out a week.
That'd be, that's the plan. That's the big plan. There you go.
So I've talked to a few contractors and I still need to get pricing because we still want to do some type of drainage. I'd like to get some fencing replaced on field three and get some of that dirt scraped off, get it crowned so it's usable. And would that, that would be a field you guys would use for junior high? Would that be your junior high field?
The thought there, it obviously just has to be a program. We would like to put the fourth field up with the other three.
Sure.
And put, and then we could turn that into what the girls wanted or
Same. I think softball has some ideas for field three, too.
Our, our goal, our goal, so the, the space where the fourth field could go, we could mirror field six. So field six could shift, basically so the Pee-wee field becomes the new field. And then we don't have to buy off all of the fencing at once. It's not, it's not as big of a commitment upfront in terms of dollars. Field six, we can lengthen that fence. I know previous, there were some questions about posts and shifting a little closer to the wellheads. I frankly don't think that's a concern. We're going, we could go maybe three feet in the ground. And we could get the extra length there to turn that into a Little League field. And then we, the, we have to evaluate, obviously, the new batting cage and equipment storage facility. The goal is to put that closer to the concession stand currently. So that either five or seven would become the new junior high field.
You'd probably be better off with five, if I hadn't guessed, just because of the dirt bill.
Which
You wouldn't have to do that then, yeah.
We've got, we've got the resources to, to move that dirt if we need to. The biggest concern with five is that's the bulk of the parking. The length isn't quite there, so we'd have to go a taller fence. But that's the, that's the goal there.
So you're saying field three, if it was left alone and nothing was done to it, it's not going to burden you guys at all?
The big, the biggest thing's timing, obviously. We still have junior high next year. So I'm sure you guys are aware that junior high played out at the Klinske Dykes field last year.
No, like, if we get, if we move forward with field four, three would be
Well, but I guess Are you checking on the investing the money for next year?
Yes.
It'll only be for like a year, hopefully.
Get the money around to get the work done early spring of next year. So field three's playable. It would buy you guys some time. So if it ended up taking three years to get a fourth field up there?
That would be good. I mean, as long as, I would hate for you guys to do that if no one's going to use it afterwards. But like, if softball's going to use it
It needs done.
And all that, then yeah, by all means, that would be great because it's, we're not going to have this, the fourth field next year. So, and we need something for junior high.
Sure. And I'm sure you'd rather keep it all
Yes. And then long-term, we'd like to have it up there, too, just because of the concessions and the bathrooms and everything's right there. And it'll help with concession stand workers. And maybe we can pull the resources from junior high working on Little League nights and vice versa so that you're not missing kids' games. And it's already very problematic as it is. So yeah, that, that's the idea. But that would be helpful, kind of bridge the gap between today and, and the sport field expansion.
Sure.
Anyone else have any other questions? Is there any questions for us? What do you guys think?
I'm in favor of a partnership with them.
Something for a long-term, a little bit longer-term contract, year by year.
You guys want an answer tonight?
Yeah, just, I would like more like just first steps. What do you, what do we need? Do we need more?
I think the verbiage of the lease obviously still has to get hammered out.
Yeah, right.
But the general consensus of how you guys are feeling is I guess, I'd like to hear everybody say whether you're in support or don't support it, I guess, is
I know we should start to work towards that contract.
Because we've got several fundraising ideas. Because, I mean, the goal is to get that fourth field done as soon as possible. So we just want to make sure that we're good to proceed with that stuff.
Well, your batting cages is first priority kind of thing.
I, that's not a specific order. The big, the fourth field, obviously, to get junior high, they kind of are cohesive. So to get the junior high field up there, those batting cages have to move either way. So it's one of those that
Kind of together.
They kind of go hand in hand, but
And I think when we put the list together, it was, we initially did it, we didn't realize there's as big a gap as there is at junior high, right? And this has kind of come to light and it's been the priority on that's been escalated here over the last
I guess one concern we probably need to address is parking. We do not have enough parking for three fields. We might have to be really creative there.
Well, like, one thing would be The scheduling will be a big part of that.
Yeah. Because junior high, more than life, like, we can't control everything. Like, I guess there could be nights junior highs playing at the same time. Because we wouldn't be doing the junior high scheduling. That's kind of the
Because I think they were playing on Tuesdays and Thursdays as well.
Were they? And it's Saturdays as well, yeah.
It's kind of like school doesn't take over junior A's and all sports, except
Everything but baseball. They never have, I guess. That was our profession when we took it on, right? What's that? They had it when I was in junior high. Oh, they did?
Apparently there's some history there that for a while it wasn't popular enough and the schools dropped it?
Well, I, there's a new coach now, too. I mean, there's new people there, there's new
A big question, obviously. I mean, your administrative offices are closed by the time, like, are closed for the summer in terms of, like, athletic directors and that sort of thing through, like, once Acme and junior Acme start later in the season. I don't know if that has a part of it, but we've talked to area schools and doesn't sound like anybody really wants
Well, our junior high baseball was in the spring. So we had Pony League in the summer, obviously, through the fall associations.
Which wasn't in the, okay.
But yeah, we had school ball, but we were the only, but we were playing against Putnam County, Vanmore County schools. Nobody else up here.
You assume it's a sanctioned sport, though, right? They just sanctioned girls' flag football in the state of Ohio, so it's got to be a sanctioned sport.
I don't know that it is.
No kidding?
It's, they don't have the same type of, I'm not sure, to be honest. But I know it's been a, that was the first question I had when I joined the field, like, why, why are we we asked to take this over, why is the school not doing it? And it was kind of like, it's always been, is what we're
Yeah. We asked the school and they were like, they had told us that they didn't really want to take it on. And obviously, we see that fall off in terms of just numbers, skill development, that sort of thing. Our goal, and we've talked with Coach Shock previously, obviously Coach Meiser, we have a new, we have a new baseball coach. They're excited to be a part of HBA and kind of what we're doing to try and create a continual program. So that's something that we're going to continue to do. I mean, obviously, this is stuff that doesn't necessarily pertain to the lease, but that's our goal, is to build a successful ball program and to keep the kids in our community engaged.
Christine, do you have anything to say for park director?
Well, I just wanted to comment on her saying that I, there were some days that I didn't get the fields done. I made sure that the fields are always done. I just wanted to point that out. My other question
I think you did a great job on the fields.
No, 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 no. I just wanted to point out, like, I'm
No, I had heard one night that, and I think it was because it was a late-day rain, and they said that there just wasn't enough manpower. Not that you refused to do it or didn't do it, but you just
Sure. I just moved things around to the fact of, hey, let's do both things on field five and let's let seven, like, kind of just go.
Yeah.
So moving things around in the communication part is like really big on me. I guess my question for the HBA in general is you guys have been trying to raise money for a new batting cage with the chicken dinners, correct?
Chicken dinners, more of a general fundraiser.
Okay. Well, that was my question, is like, oh, you guys, you have guys new, like, you have different things that you are trying to raise money and whatnot. How is that going to be different from, like, oh, for the last several years, you guys have been doing chicken dinners to raise for a new batting cage? Do you guys have the funding for the batting cage from raising all that money for the chicken dinners or like, where does that money go? Where's the funds for that go if it's not going towards the batting cage?
It's building up, yes.
It's going towards capital projects.
But there's also, yeah, there's a pretty substantial budget just to operate every year, in jerseys and hats and all that. Umpires is another very big one.
I think we went through, I think we spent almost $13,000 in umpires this last year.
Now that you guys are official 503(c), you'll be able to take donations from local organizations such as Eagles and other places, correct?
And honestly, that's been a holdup on some organizations in the past because we weren't. So they're like, once you get that, we can.
It does open up a lot to community.
And I mean, some of these, I mean, ultimately, like, to get this fourth field and the batting cage and all of that done in a reasonable amount of time, it's going to be more than chicken dinner. But we're going to have to approach bigger companies and talk to them about that. Like, it's going to need to be coming from a little different areas. But that's a good question. I mean, yes, it's, it's building up trying to get towards that, but it says there is the operating cost each
Yeah, we're not just sitting on a lot of money.
Well, yeah, no, I just, you know.
We haven't got there yet.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else?
I like your vision. I like your enthusiasm. I like you guys doing this, so.
We like to rob
Anybody need any potatoes?
Is this a joke?
Oh, no.
No, I, I think it could be good. I really do.
All right, well, you have a thought, you have a good one.
Easily with hang. You don't start a joke and not finish it.
We inherited a bunch of potatoes after the All-Star tournament. Tanell, what do you know about those?
Well, I thank you for your time. We're working on the new revisions on the contract and everything. Get that worked out with you and Cory and committee and Christina, so. Gentlemen, thank you for what you've done in the past and what you're continuing to do in the future and all the different volunteers and everybody. So thank you so much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Well, if you have any other questions, Bill, you go through it.
Thank you, Mike.
All righty. Oh, we're not done yet.
You told me five minutes. Took 25 and you're leaving.
Well, you've got, next on the agenda, the approval of the July 7th council meetings.
Making motion to approve this written.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
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 Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
You have a bills list, a payment list in your package, impressions and that.
Is there ever an end in sight on the drying bed dumpsters? No. I was always hoping that those would quit showing up sometimes.
We're, I'm really, really hoping in the next, the next year or two, we can get a sledge press and it will that'll help die, that'll die down, but we'll be calling out dry tonnage instead of wet tonnage. We get a lot more out of dry tonnage. I'll make motion to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Eggway?
Yes.
I do not believe we had any boards or commissions that met, unless I'm mistaken. But we had a insurance committee meet. Those minutes are in your packets. You're continuing to work on other things for that down the road.
Yeah, I'm attending a webinar on Thursday. I'll let you, it's contested, so.
Thank you for doing that. Cory, do you have any reports to do, roll call?
No, I can just hit on a couple of things. Last week, we did, our department did change out a couple water valve housings down on South Bryan and Henderson Street. Ohio asphalt will be in to patch that section of street. And they are bumping up their paving to Oak Street the first week of August. They're going to come in and do that. But from 18 up to Handle Lane, they're just going to have that section milled. We're not going to, we're not going to pave that yet. We're just going to pave from Handle Lane all the way past Fairgrounds entrance. Due to the fact that the Fines Avenue lift station, there's going to be a tie-in point there. They don't want to tear up that new asphalt, so it'll be milled. And if they don't get back this fall, they'll do it first thing in the spring. They'll pave that. Basically, they can divide up to State Road 18. They will also be paving three large spots out on Industrial Drive, those three spots that came apart. It was awfully expensive to do that whole section right there. So they're going to come in and do those three repairs along with about six or seven patch spots on some site streets as well. Elm Street Water Main, they started bringing in equipment. They're staging it in the recycle lot there on Elm Street. They will be doing a little bit of work before the end of this week. And then the first bid to water shutdown will be on Monday. We will notify the residents Thursday or Friday. We'll notify them for the weekend. And they'll have a minimum of 24-hour notice before any water shutdown, before any other tie-in, so.
They'll get two notices, the one a couple of days before.
They'll get, they'll get one probably Friday for the, for the Monday shutdown. I don't know when the next shutdown will be, or the next tie-in will be.
So there are going to be any traffic issues with that?
They'll, they'll shut it down. They're going to shut it down from Cornelia to U Sargan. It's be local residents there and out of the driveways.
Okay, okay, so it's going to be, okay, one for advice and one for.
Okay, shouldn't be any of that. The substantial completion is actually September twenty-sixth, but, um, Nolan from Vincent seemed to think it'll be more like the end of August it will be completed, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
Any questions for Cory?
Any update on water issues down those flush beds?
Um, tomorrow, we're hoping to get those drain. He goes into the edge of the concrete there. Johnny Yoder, I spoke to Johnny. Instead of us handing it, digging it all, he's volunteered his time on his little one foot bucket on his mini ax and he's going to cut it all in. We'll, we'll bet it with pea gravel. We'll attach those drains to the edge of the concrete and dump it into that storm line back there. And hopefully it'll capture all the runoff from that concrete into those. I mean, obviously when it rains, it's still going to be muddy for a while. It should capture all the drain water. Raindrop, I contacted them again for the bucket. It's not one that. To dump until we're constantly down there moving it, so. They sent a tech out for two different times. This will be the third time for it.
All right, uh, moving forward, we have a solicitor's report.
Your second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirteen by caption only to retain legal counsel from the city of Defiance, Ohio and prosecuting all misdemeanor criminal and traffic cases coming before the Defiance municipal court and the appellate courts thereafter. Resizing out of alleged violations of the traffic and criminal statutes of the state of Ohio and/or ordinances of the eligible spill and declaring emergency. And I have your answers.
I was going to say, we have a lot of questions on this last.
Um, you wanted to know when their bill, their bill is beginning of the calendar year. And they, um, it runs from July first, but drive to, to June thirtieth of this year.
Who the dates? So you're saying January first is when you have to pay them? And what happens if we find somebody that, you know, replaces Rachel and leaves us?
We're going to do it.
No, because we've signed the contract.
Lots of thing, I mean.
Well.
If you don't want to have it four months in, then we have somebody that's.
Is it a pro rated amount then I would assume or?
That was where your questions were last night.
Wanted to know how much and when, and that's what I got. I don't, it's not anything that were prorating.
Well, after this point in time, we've only had two attorneys reach out to us and that was asking, actually talking to them kind of thing. So we had nobody apply. Um, but we're maybe have two that are interested, but until that time, Rachel's last day is the end of July, right? Um, you know, when with Mark's cases, we have to have, I could check with the county if they would do until we find somebody.
Were either of those two interested in the criminal side of things?
Neither one of them. But I could check with, uh, Mr. O'Donnell and ask him if they could do a month by month until we, if we do find an attorney that would handle everything, then. Uh, we wouldn't have to do the contract, right? But if they don't, then we'd have to fire that off. But the two that I did speak to did not want to handle criminal. Uh, they called one Friday and they, we're going to get with the partners and, and check things out because I know another one of their attorneys handled some cities and villages. But they were, they were interested in it, but they had to get with their higher ups.
Well, I started to talk to you before the meeting, but any idea what we're going to pay this person on top of what we're going to pay Defiance?
Not until, yeah.
So we don't know what we're spending yet again.
We've been that far with it.
Keep spending money and nobody knows what we're.
Well, this doesn't have to be an emergency, does it? Or it does?
Well, we want to be at one emergency because we're in the middle of it right now and I'm sure we have people over there who need legal advice with the police department. It doesn't have to be, but just so you know, Rachel's leaving.
Well, yeah, she's leaving on that, yeah. Did you ever talk to Chief, did you ever talk to Sean between now and the last time we talked about?
I have not talked to Sean.
You were going to talk to the other gentleman too about the after hours calls and different things sometimes.
Well, Sean's the one I need to talk to about that. Because it's got to be available twenty-four hours.
Right.
When we have issues trying to reach him. So. That's my main concern. I think there was another thing I sent back on the contract. There was two highlight sections. I think an issue we're going to run into is, is that, I mean, there are no local attorneys. There's nobody in town anymore. Most of those, most attorneys do bill hourly. So, you know, you're going to get what you pay for regardless of something. If you say, we're only going to pay you this much, well, that's what you're going to get. You're not going to get somebody that's available twenty-four hours a day here. That's why I just think you're better off just going with the city. So I reached out to my patrol chiefs committee on how a lot of them do, do contracts. Uh, I did receive a contract from, uh, near the park, which is down by Columbus. You know, they pay a contract. Williams County, I know Pioneer, they pay, they pay per case. Uh, like they have a solicitor, but their solicitor does just very little criminal stuff, some of the minor stuff. And, but most of the time they submit to, um, Oberenbry and to their law directors or the city attorneys and they pay by case. So they hit a bill at the end of the year and it's like cases they review, cases they prosecute. You know, and so they can change, you know, it's going to change your view depending on how many numbers cases. And we do a lot more cases than they do for sure, so. So, again, you know, most municipalities that don't have that option with a solicitor, that's what they're doing. They're contracting with others. Some have gotten lucky where their prosecutor's office will do, don't charge them at all. They just deal for them, so.
But correct me if I'm wrong, Rachel, but you said when you talked over the course of the time you've been here, most of your time is dealt with more the criminal side.
Yeah, I was going to, yeah, I was going to say that. The bulk of my work is right now, I think, with the criminal pieces. I mean, I'm there. At least once a week for arraignments, if not two or three times a week for pre-trials. Then, you know, getting discovery together and having pre-trials with the attorneys. And then if there's a trial, I have to prep for trials, things like that. So it's, it is quite, um.
Time consuming.
Time consuming, yeah. This, this, this part of it, I mean, other than coming to council meetings, the, the civil side of it is, is quite minimal. I think to me compared to handling these cases. So, I mean, that's obviously the, that amount is less than what I'm currently getting paid. That's just obviously for the criminal side of it, but. Um, you know, I, I don't know how much work the solicitor that's just handling the civil side of it is really going to do. So that might go, I mean, coming to meetings, obviously, and answering the questions you guys have, doing research, but.
Orders, those things like that.
Ordances, which, yeah, so.
The second question I put when I sent back the email on the contract was if we go with them under a contract. Uh, I need to find out if they're going to require any officer to be at every arraignment. Uh, like a you with the county and the state patrol on those initial days of arraignments. Because that will be, uh, uh, that could generate, uh, overtime for us possibly. If we have to have an officer there for every arraignment, so.
Did we do that now when?
No, because we have.
Cause I'm there, yeah. I read the complaint.
So. Yeah. So, but, yeah, it's been that way since thirty years I've been in Defiance County, so. Gil Picksel was the only one that never had to have, have an officer there because they always had a solicitor appearing on their behalf, so.
Wouldn't Defiance be there on our behalf? Wouldn't that be the same thing?
No.
Other than what we paying them? I mean, we're paying them to represent us down there. Why wouldn't they be representing us?
All we got, all we have to work with. Hiring them to be Rachel, like a Rachel position. That's the question we need to ask.
I guess we could ask them, but, you know, they still, I think everybody's paying or they, you know.
I, I don't feel comfortable loading on it just because there's too many unknowns.
Right.
I mean, I feel like we're going to rush through this and. We have, I mean, I, I have council meetings August fourth, but I don't know.
We, we could reach out to Sean tomorrow and ask his question.
Yeah, because I know the sheriff, when I talked to the sheriff, he did not know if they were still paying them or not. Because they were years ago and they weren't writing enough tickets.
No.
For immunity court. So.
But between the two of us, we can call and ask those questions and have an answer by a council meeting. Maybe we'll have, uh, the attorney will step up or.
Then we have second reading of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve by caption only to levy a tax for current operating expenses directing the Defiance County Board of Elections to submit about questions to the electors in authorizing levies for such purposes. And then first reading of resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen by caption only to enter agreement with the Defiance County Commissioners for recovery monies expended for providing legal counsel with indigent persons for the calendar year twenty twenty-six. Then first reading of resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen by caption only to assess streetlight knowledge and clearing emergency.
Make motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eggway. Yes. Second and final reading of resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen by caption only to assess streetlight knowledge and clearing emergency.
Just to be clear, this is a renewal, correct?
It's been the same rate for as long as I've ever known.
It's just another renewal. All right, I'll make a motion. I'll move.
I've got a second. Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Eggway. Yes.
Thank you. Next is, uh. Chief Danny, you have anything for the council?
No, just, um, a little about that, uh, contract.
Bruce, Chief Hart, are you like, which? Eric, do you have anything?
No, sir.
No forgiveness? Chief Bruce.
Did you just really call you Chief Hart? Yes.
Yeah.
Because you have a nice heart.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
With an E.
I don't know if you heard that.
Danny, you changed.
So, a couple of weeks ago, I sent each and every one of you a, a packet. And, uh, well, except for Cory, and, yeah, you don't get packets. Um, but I sent each council member a packet and I didn't even receive a, hey, thank you, got it, looked at, nothing. So instead of me sending out a packet, I'm going to tell you.
I thought the packet said, get ahold of me if you had any questions or comments.
Yeah, well, there was no, not even a, not even, hey, we got it.
We got trouble from Cheryl if we give them responses that email. We're not allowed to submit anything unless you're an open session.
Okay, yeah, because I, because, because just the day earlier, Mike had, Mike had said, well, you never send us packets. I said, because nobody looks at them.
Oh, no, we love them. I love them.
And actually, I'm pretty sure Eric said.
We walked out yet last time. I'm like, I love the packet Bruce said it. I love having all that information ahead of time, something that's documented, it's on paper. There's no offense, our minutes don't have every single word that's said during a meeting. So you might talk about ten things and our minutes might have five or six of them.
Right.
Like in detail. So having that information from all the chiefs, I've asked Mike for a long time, can we get all that information ahead of time?
And I just talked to him.
Same thing for the administrative report. If you ask something, give it to them ahead of time so we can look it over. If we have questions, grab it.
China figure. Hold on, Cheryl, are we allowed to say thank you when they send us a packet?
Sure.
You can say that. You better send us another packet.
I will. Yeah, because if I don't send a packet, then you'll be like, hey. All right, so, um.
You got some standard reporting there.
So, a couple of things, uh, in the packet at the last time, I think, uh, one of the things that we talked, that I talked about was. Uh, the amount of, uh, back-to-back runs, um, that we've had this year and last year. Uh, so. Uh, after looking at a lot of stuff, uh, twenty-one percent of our runs are within two hours or less of each other. So we are having, uh, quite a number of back-to-back runs. Um, we do have, uh, eighty-five percent of our runs or actually close to ninety percent of our runs are coming on days that, um. Uh, have two or more runs involved. Uh, May fifteenth of last year, we, we actually hit a record with seven runs in that day. Um, we've had multiple days where we've had six runs and that is EMS and tire combined, so it's not just EMS. But, um, um, so moving on, Abby has, uh, moved on. Um, and for, for a while, I was very hesitant about hiring, uh, replacing her, uh, full-time. Um, I have talked with Cheryl. Um, and I'm going to replace a, I'm going to replace a full-timer with a new full-timer. Um, I'm going to be hiring, I'm going to be moving Isaac Wilhelm up into the full-time position. He has demonstrated, uh, a lot of go-gettiness, I guess, and, uh. Uh, he's, uh, wanting to take the paramedic in September. Um, he's, um, he's got a good head on his shoulders and he's, and, uh, he's really, really wanting to do it. Um, everybody over there likes him, so, um, I, I'm looking to, uh, start that in August, so. Speaking of August, uh, we come to the fair. So, but the fair, um, I put out a tentative schedule from nine A to nine P. Now, I have to talk to Cheryl, you know, obviously I want to make sure that, you know, we could do this. Um, we can, uh, we're going to do a nine A to nine P. Uh, a truck will be down at the fairgrounds and one will be up here. And if we do have a second call, that truck will actually move up here. We are not covering any events. Um, that's not what we're here to do. We're here to, uh, we're here to serve everybody in the county or in our territory.
Have you already told the fair board that so they can make preparations?
So I, I have talked to Isaac and he's a hundred percent on board with us having a truck down there. Sherwood and Delaware will also have a truck down there, but, uh, we are, we are the primary. Obviously with that being said, that's going to be a week that, uh, I will probably be, probably be, um, responding to almost everything. Just because of the fact that, uh, you get down there and you can get into dehydration, you can get into some trauma, if you can get into some, you know, some off-the-wall stuff. Fair week, fair week, it always seems like we get, uh, an abundance, an overabundance of calls down there. Um, and, you know, if, uh, we have a truck down there, maybe we, this year we won't, I'll knock on wood, hopefully. So. Uh, yeah, speaking of, uh, the paramedic class, um, that is coming up in September. Um, I have Isaac, Felix and Drew all, all on board. Uh, they have gotten a grant for a majority of it. Um, still working on trying to minimize our cost for, for here. And, uh, Abby, Abby's going to take the RN to medic program. So with all that being said, by this time next year, we could have six paramedics, uh, on board. Um, something that this town has never had. So, and I think it's way past time that it has. And last but not least, I know at the last council meeting, somebody brought up the co, the comment that. Uh, I should, I should be going to the pharmacy to buy supplies. I'm here to tell you that's not a thought, that's not an option. If I could buy the supplies up there, I would. But no, I buy all my medications from up there and, um. And after talking with John, uh, John, quite frankly, doesn't even want to do what we need. Um, because that would involve a lot more equipment and, uh. Um, because that would involve a lot more equipment and, uh, he's like, he's like, I'm not a, I'm not, it doesn't hurt my feelings that you guys don't come up here and, you know, buy cervical collars and things like that. So, um, but with that being said, you know, we've got, uh, a pretty busy, pretty, pretty busy couple of months ahead of us, you know, we're still in the middle of trauma season and, um, um, this Wednesday, I'm actually having a meeting with our medical director, so I will be, uh, I will be out for about four hours, four or five hours on, on Wednesday night. So, um, if that's it, have you got any questions?
Did Isaac get the, the money last time? He was the one that was still waiting to see if he got the grant, did?
Yeah, he was, uh, there was a, I, I won't, I won't, uh, throw anybody under the bus, but there was a personal thing and he, he called, he made a phone call when, uh, when that brought up. But yeah, he's, he's actively working on it and he's getting, he'll have the money.
Why, and I see the other two received it, you said you would, you'd expect that he would get it.
Yeah, 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 no, uh, I asked him to look at his, uh, fast form the other night and, uh, we found an issue and he, so he had to make a phone call, so.
Any questions for Bruce?
No, Bruce, I just wanna thank you, you know, hearing those numbers, um, the paramedics, I don't know that everyone in the community understands exactly what a paramedic can do, um, in the support that you guys have, I really appreciate that. Um, I'm just kinda curious, you know.
Sure.
The other end of the county, um, came and it was pretty abrupt with us, has it made its way back there that we're doing okay?
I don't think so.
What's that?
I don't know, go ahead, Bruce.
So, I am on the, I am on the county-wide EMS committee, okay, um, yes, it's, it's made its way back.
Okay, I just, they, I just kinda felt like we were presenting a, uh, plan to them and it wasn't good enough, so what you've done and got us back where we needed to be and then above, um, it's just a compliment to you and your department.
Well, the, so I will, I will speak to that in this, okay, last year when I, or, or when I came back, wh- when I came back, and this is not a, a reflection on, on the people over there, when I came back, this whole department was in disarray. It really was. And you had five, five, well, actually six if you counted me, but I was here whenever, I wasn't, I wasn't a regular. Since that time, we have added a ton of people and, and it's just because, and it's because of the fact that people are stepping up, um, and I, yeah, I do, um, I do have a different philosophy of, of leadership, you know. Um, I believe in people and I, and I push those people to become the best versions of themselves, because if a leader doesn't do that, then they're not a leader.
You definitely increase his numbers and we don't have near the, uh, well, we don't have them anymore, you're not calling Cheryl to come over here.
No, we, we don't.
We, we, that's kind of, when nine-one-one would get a call and they were getting a response, they were calling other departments to, to help respond, and we haven't had that in a long, long time.
Yeah, if, if it happens, if that happens, there's, there's, there's something, there, there's something definitely wrong and, you know, but, uh, mo- almost everybody over there has, has stepped up to, you know, to make sure that we don't have those issues. And last but not least, this for Cheryl, five eleven goes in, four nine will change tomorrow.
Signing off. There you go. Thank you, Bruce. Thank you for the report, um. We got eight, eight down, yeah.
What about your, um, oil changes, where are we at with getting them all serviced?
Oh boy, y'all brought me up here anyway, how y'all doing anyhow? As far as the department goes, even though I didn't have anything to say, there was something about the maintenance of our vehicles, um, all of our trucks in the last month or two has all been serviced. Uh, five oh four just came back from Finley, um, there was a piece that was broken off the bottom of it, it got repaired, uh, it got sent back. Um, five oh one has been serviced, which is the latter truck, she just got serviced not too long ago. Uh, the take-a-truck is next, five oh three is already been serviced, five oh four got serviced. Um, sixteen recently got serviced probably about a month ago up here at Smith's. All our trucks have now been serviced, fifteen is out now, which is our bus, um, that's getting serviced now, or just came back, actions. So, that was out at Brown's, they serviced that out their own Jericho, um, so all our apparatuses, the maintenance have already has been done.
Good to hear.
There's, there's nothing lingering, uh, as far as service lives goes, if it is, then it must have been the last few days where I wasn't told about it or however, but the great thing about what is happening over there, like, Bruce was reiterating as far as stepping up. Guys realize that all of a sudden does that light switch and everybody start working as a team, it wasn't just a, a one-person or two-person job and doing all the footwork, everybody came together, which is how I had mentioned it to everybody, how we're a team, you know. Hey, let me know this and that, do the footwork, back and forth, however. So, we are coming together as a department as far as EMS side, Bruce had already talked about that, on the fire side, again, we have a few guys that, uh, want to go into the next level, uh, of certification that starts in September. We have seven people who want to go into it, I'm supposed to get confirmation either today or tomorrow, as far as how many slots are available. So, there's a chance that all seven of those will go through and do the level one fire training in September. Uh, but for sure, I believe that there was, uh, definite six spots, so there's seven spot, not sure. Uh, seven people that apply, all seven registrations have been submitted, and I got confirmation that they had them, I just gotta get confirmation on if all seven of them are able to, um, attend the fire one class, but. Jewel Township is also holding a fire one class as well in September, so if that one or two people that don't get into Brian's class, then Jewel's the second option.
Now, wasn't there an issue with the grants at Brian?
There was an issue with the grant from Brian from the last group of people.
That's right, not the Cheryl, wasn't mine issue, yeah.
I'm at like I didn't see that, but it's okay.
It went through the doorway of my office.
I, initially, since we're talking about it, initially, the grant was, well, sorry, being covered, it had been a while since the grants had not been covered at Brian during their training and all that sort of thing. I did find out to a chief's meeting months before, uh, after that, that the chief from Brian came up and said, hey, the grant didn't go through. So, I would be seeing invoices, yes, it was shocking to me because initially said that the grant, everything was already taken care of. But mind you, we do sign a waiver stating that if a grant is not covered, we're liable for the cost, so everybody signs that waiver.
And I guess one of my thoughts would be that we hold off on sending anyone else to the fire training until next year in case the grant doesn't go through again and it would be on next year's budget and can budget that way, because obviously, we had not budgeted for us to pick up the bill. I, I, I'm.
No, because I have to say that, but yes.
That's just my thoughts, that's not the committee, or you know, the, the committee's thoughts.
You're not, you're not far from telling the truth, just like, right now, as of now, I'm under the impression that the grant was taken care of for the two level two guys who just went through. But they say that that won't, that finalization won't come back until December to know if they got the grant for those two individuals as well. So, while what you say, it makes perfect sense, on the other hand, I don't wanna handicap these guys for their, their certification because it's gonna be pretty good in the department. But yes, I did get the cost of it, I do get what you're saying a hundred percent, but if I tell these guys no, then it will appear on surface that I'm keeping these guys from getting more trained than is readily available to me.
Well, you can tell them we said no.
Everybody assume that.
I, I very, I very well could do that, I don't mind being the bad guy sometimes, you know, I haven't been lately, but I don't mind being the bad guy, you know what I'm saying, um, so.
What's the class run?
Do what?
What's the class run for, for individual?
Uh, for this, for the, for the fire one class is two days a week.
I think you meant how much, you knew how much they cost.
What's that cost?
How much it costs?
Yeah, yeah.
The fire one, uh, costs per individual, uh, I believe is seventeen hundred, that's if the grant doesn't go through. The fire two was twenty, is twenty-six hundred a piece. Uh, thirty-six hour, thirty-six hour is one thousand. So, one thousand, sixteen hundred, twenty-six hundred, so for each level.
Thank you.
Okay? So, other than that, on a good note, outside of that, uh, we have a banquet that's coming up, uh, on the second, the annual banquet, uh, for awards, as far as firemen, EMSI, um, retirees, families from the department, all welcome. There's a, anybody that is just recognizing people who've done great for the year twenty twenty-five, it was missed last year, now we're picking back up on it and we're gonna start again this year, and that's on August second. So, that's our annual banquet for awards and for people who have demonstrated good, uh, skill on and off the fire ground, and EMSI as well.
Very good. Thank you, Derek.
Yeah, thank you.
Cheryl, you're up.
I have the usual reports, but you also have your annual letter, we get one of these every year for American Tower, where they offer, offering to, um, purchase the land instead of leasing. And so, you'll have to decide if you want to do that or not.
How long, how long did they sit on that use of the issue?
For the hours?
Couple, three years? We'll, we'll table this one.
I told them that was called.
It's on the agenda for three years from now.
This is a different company. It's Verizon or something.
Yeah, but it's through American Tower.
Yeah, it is Verizon, it's their company to lease, it is Verizon.
People who have American Tower just go and buy stuff that are, all the towers.
Yeah.
And then they lease out the tower to other people to make more money, but anyway, they would like to buy their little plot of land, which I always tell y'all, always vote no, but I always give you the option, so you have it today. We also have the junior mayor's court report, and we have three different Hicksville Police Department reports with cash, um, K nine, Brian Day in the Park, uh, we have, um, a donation from ladies auxiliary at the Eagles, and we have some reimbursement for law enforcement training, any questions on that? And I don't, I always say I don't do Facebook and I don't, a hundred percent, but I will always pass around a nice little letter, don't y'all got this?
Appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah. When I get those, it makes me smile.
You wanna read it, Cheryl? I said that one, didn't I? I said, read it, Cheryl.
I do have this that came in today, it's from the back-to-school breakfast, if anyone wants to go, let me know so I can RSVP the village council. And they need to know so they know how many breakfasts to cook. That is all I have. I just, under your report, I just wanna remind all the department heads that it is the middle to end of July, I'm going to be expecting your budgets by September first.
You can expect, but.
This is your, hey, I, I don't care if you give me your budget, I love to work with Cheryl to figure out exactly what you get, so if you want an opinion on it.
I just tell Cheryl what I want.
I'm trying to take in Charlie's footsteps, Charlie, Charlie set a precedent last year and I'm just trying to.
And then they kick me off, I guess.
No, I just, yeah, serious note, I just, those budgets, that time just comes fast every time, and I do not wanna get stuck having to do an emergency like we have the last two years, so please, get those budgets in.
Five years.
Okay, well, this will be, this will only be my third year, so I've only had to pass it as emergency for two, so let's, let's change the tide here.
And then, uh, that it for Cheryl, any questions for Cheryl? I don't, I don't mind reading this letter, I think it's nice, because I think those flags at the cemetery, a lot of people enjoy them, there's no honor, uh, everything, United States, the military, the cemetery, they, they do spend a lot of time with the scouts not putting them up. I know Zane, Zedike had started that project, now the scouts have taken it over, but, uh, as you just said, city, uh, city government, this letter is to thank you for the beautiful display of the old glory in the cemetery and along the highway. We come to Hicksville Cemetery each year for Decoration Day to decorate family buried there. A bit late this year, but we, uh, were delighted to see the flag still flying and how nice you keep the cemetery. Thank you to all who are, who are responsible for this, Money Wolf's fits, um, and it's Marlene Roberts, I believe, and they are from Three Rivers, Michigan, so they come every year, so we appreciate that, um, from the Roberts family and coming back to town and, and, um, honoring our military, the flags and the village and their locals and everything, so, um, I have a couple of notes here real quick, um, I just, I don't, Corey knew this, but just in case, State Route forty-nine is supposed to be getting repaved between Payne and Hicksville, so I know a lot of people use forty-nine to get to thirty and, and south. Um, but it's starting in July twenty-second through mid-August, hopefully, it's a different type of paving process than they did on eighteen, I know we've had a lot of cracked windshields and, uh, we've had one, or a lot of people have had that. So, you might wanna stay clear of that area while they're paving that long stretch of highway there, stick around, uh, south forty-nine. Uh, I'd like to thank the beautification committee, um, during this, these hot months and everything, I think the town looks really nice with the flowers, I see them, I'm seeing them, outwatering them every night with the downtown, uh, the corner properties in front of the police department, all over the place, but, uh, the volunteers keep up with watering and keeping them flowers fresh and everything and at the park. National Farm Market Week is August third through the ninth, uh, I wanna thank the local farmers market organizers and vendors who bring their local produce, baked goods and other, and other things to the Hicksville residents. The market is open every Saturday from nine AM to noon on the corner of North Main and Smith Street, so that's a nice thing we've done in years and it keeps, looks like it keeps growing, so thank you for that. Um, real quick, uh, I know Corey, myself, Michael Wall, Erica, the Keller Spec Building, um, they're still wanting to do the project, Michael reached out to us a couple, about a month ago, Michael Wall from Keller's, and he goes, we're, we're still waiting on the survey to get the results back.
Yeah, he's been waiting on some business.
And I sent, I told Michael to give him a call and he's called and it was supposed to be done first of July, but we are still waiting for the survey to keep moving along with the national drive project.
I agree, Bob, right?
But it's taking a long time to get that done, so hopefully, it's gonna get completed here, because we're ready to move forward with that. Like I said earlier, I spoke into two attorneys by phone, they both kinda seem interested and, um, they were supposed to get back to me, they have not yet, but, um, things like that. Uh, I do wanna thank Rachel, uh, for her time here with the village, she gave us an ending date of, uh, end of July, um, for her time here serving the village as solicitor, so I wanna thank her for representing the police department there in court and us here at the village hall. Uh, success in the future and your family and everything, and, and we hope you do well, so thank you to Rachel for her time here, appreciate that, so, uh, I don't think I have anything else, so. Anything else here?
Make a motion to the chair. We need an executive session. Purchase or sale of property.
Is that a motion? Is it Mike up?
Yeah, I have, I have something.
First stop on Mike?
Tell him to get old.
How you doing, Mike?
Hey, I own a house, uh, South Maine and Beach, and we had sewer problems with it, they dug for three days, finally, we found a sewer around the front of the house. So, the guy that came down from the water department, and I can't tell you his name, but he looked at the driveway and there's a drain in the driveway that he says goes to the city sewer. And it's water that runs down the driveway into this drain. to the city sewer, and it's water that runs down the driveway into this drain. Now, this house has been there for seventy-some years, and that drain's been there for seventy-some years, and he wants me to cap it. Yeah, I don't think that's right. If I cap it, the water's gonna run right in the house. I don't have, I mean, I, it's also in that driveway, and I can't, I, I can't, I mean, I just can't do it. There's gotta be a thing here somehow to figure out.
I wanna, I wanna ask Cory, if I would have known in advance, I would have caught you up at the office. You might wanna check the blueprints that might be tied into the storm on South Main.
I got a letter today from the, from the village that said that I had to cap this drain.
Letter from?
The village, I don't know, Mike's got the letter, my boy. And I would think there'd be something there, somewhere along the line, there'd be a grand platter or something, I mean, you just can't tear up a big, long cement driveway to get rid of a drain.
Right.
This going to the city sewer, and this went there for years, and nobody's complained, nobody's fixed. I don't know how he knows that it goes to the city sewer, because they were there two or three days, just trying to find the sewer line for me, witching it. And we dug up front, we dug on the sides, we dug on the back, finally, we found it.
I'll have them look into it to see where that goes.
Pardon?
I'll have them look into it, see where that driveway drain goes, we'll just dump a camera into that sewer main.
Well, it doesn't make any difference in it, if it does go there.
Right.
What, I mean, what the hell? You know, it's just water.
I get it. And we're trying to eliminate as much surface water out of the sewer system as possible.
Yeah, I know, I understand what you're saying, but it just.
But yours could be going into the storm line out there as well, when they done that work. I, I don't know. All I can do is pull prints and look, but I, I had no idea of any of this, before you just said something, I had no idea that this was going on.
Well, I don't know, but it just doesn't seem like that's the right thing to do.
Usually, something like that, Mike, if you would have checked, maybe checked with Cory, wouldn't you get a letter like that?
Well, I don't, I mean, I, this is where it came.
Sure.
So if you direct him, I'm, that's fine, I got it, no problem.
I'll take a look into it, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You said motion for.
Is any motion for a hearing? Wish I seconded.
Well, you guys go home and let's.
Parliamentary procedure, sorry.
I'll second that executive session.
Roll call.
Engwood? Yes. Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. I got a guy behind mine.
Thank you, everybody.
My questions should be short.